Good evening. Chair calls to order our public hearing for Bill 23-014 and Resolution 02423. I want to thank you all for coming out tonight. I have a little bit of business we're going to take care of first. The purpose of this public hearing is to hear comments concerning Bill Number 23-014, which is a proposed annual budget and appropriation ordinance for Harford County for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024, and also Resolution 024-23 regarding the intent of the county council to consider a tax rate in excess of the constant yield tax rate as established by the Maryland Department of Assessments and Taxation in both the incorporated municipalities and unincorporated areas of the county, and Resolution 025-23, which is the capital program for the fiscal years ending June 30th, 2024 through June 30th, 2029. The council also accepts and will consider written testimony submitted in addition to or in lieu of verbal testimony. The final tax rate will be adopted by the county council in the legislative session on Tuesday, June 13th, 2023 at 7:30 PM to be held in the county council chambers located at 212 South Bond Street, Bel Air. Again, as I look around the room this evening, I see some unfamiliar faces. So I just want to let everyone know that our rules and procedures will allow each of you three minutes to speak. I want you to all be respectful of one another and your time, and no applauding, no loud burst, and hopefully we'll be able to roll through this and listen to each of your concerns and comments. This venue is for you just for that reason. This is one of the few opportunities that you have to have your voices heard within county government. Ms. Dixon?
Our first speaker this evening is Talen Kite, followed by David Bauer.
Good evening, ma'am. Name an address for the record, please.
Talen Kite, 554 Doe Field Court, Abingdon. Good evening. I come to you as a second-year kindergarten teacher at Prospect Mill. My two years in HCPS, despite being told that this county is the greatest to be in, have been turbulent in terms of funding. I started my career at Swan Creek as a virtual kindergarten teacher, and I loved it. You may have seen me on the HCPS Twitter page in my rainbow cubicle, touting that I was a virtual student from first to 12th grade myself. But when that position was cut, I was to be moved to virtual 3rd grade. Well, of course, funding cuts made that position unavailable, to which I have now been moved to an in-person kindergarten class this year. Since the proposed budget was released, my team members have told me to start looking at other counties and prepare to have my position cut. There are whispers and worries behind closed doors, and yet I still show up for my kids. In fact, someone asked me today if I thought my position was secure for next year, and to which I responded, "I don't know." Oh, and did I mention I'm also the assistant coach for the women's volleyball team at Harford Community College. I spend countless hours in the gym, on the bus, working with student athletes to give them the opportunity to study and play at a higher level. With this proposed budget, tuition increases will cause many of our students to not be able to afford schooling. We are unique in providing many students with a growing period that fully equips them for a larger university, the workforce, or whatever other big dreams they have. And so I want to leave you with this. As you've heard many others speak about why you should vote no to the proposed budget, and you'll listen to more now, I want you to hear directly from my students. We have a big problem. Some people think school is not important. School is the greatest place of learning on earth. I love school because I love my teacher. You see, in our county's chosen curriculum, we teach our students to write about problems in their world, and the topic of school being important came up in their discussion. This budget, even in a watered-down kindergarten type of way, is a problem. And what kind of teacher would I be if I didn't come up here and speak about the problem? As someone who fought their entire academic career for funding, I know firsthand that while you think that students don't feel the stress and fear of something that seems so much bigger than them, they do. So take it from a kindergartner. School is important, and without quality teachers who show up day in and day out, they won't learn, and their love for learning will diminish. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, sir. Name an address, please.
Good evening. I'm David Bauer, 2952 Kirkwall Court, Abingdon. I strongly oppose the county executive's proposed budget. I believe it is problematic in a variety of ways. You all have spoken about one. You all unanimously passed a resolution asking the county executive to restore funding for the sheriff's office, central precinct, and training academy. I thank you for that. With respect to what you can do directly, I believe that state law gives you the authority to raise revenues specifically for the purpose of funding our public school system. The Maryland Education Article, Section 5-104, has a section that specifically and clearly says it overrides county charters. And let's be clear, HCPS needs the funding. The school district has explained in detail what they need the funding for. Now, some people say the school district needs to control its spending. I looked at the actual numbers, and I emailed you all some graphs. In every year except for one, for at least the last decade, our sheriff's office has had a larger operating budget increase percentage than the school district's unrestricted budget. The response from the county administration in general has been to mislead, to put it nicely. The county administration made a clear error in their analysis of the school district's financial situation, and I've seen no acknowledgement from them of that error. Mr. Cassley has continued to say the school district has $90 million in funding balance they can use despite having received the actual facts repeatedly. During the school system's presentation to this council, the county treasurer said that if the school system wants more money, it either has to come from the school system's fund balance or the county's fund balance, as if he wasn't aware of the option of restoring our previous tax rate. An actually fiscally responsible budget would have begun with ending last year's tax cut. Mr. Cassley himself even taunted you all about that tax cut during his presentation. He called it $160 million that you all won't have over the next eight years, and quote, "Unless we're going to be the tax-and-spend council," end quote. Notice, he didn't say county, he said council. The county executive is pushing the burden of doing the right thing on you all. So please, do the right thing and fund our school system. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Josie Cosgrove, followed by Aravinda Pillamari.
Good evening, ma'am. Name an address, please.
Josie Cosgrove, 222 Gatner Place, Abingdon. My name is Josie Cosgrove, and I'm a par educator in the STRIVE program at William S. James. The STRIVE program is focused on offering highly specialized instruction to our youngest kindergarten students and to our 21-year-old adults. Its focus is to provide specialized services to individuals who have significant cognitive, communication, and behavior challenges. In my classroom, we have one teacher, and I am one of four par educators. All the educators in my classroom work side by side, teaching academics, collecting data, and managing behaviors. If you were to walk in our class, you would not be able to differentiate who the teacher is from the par educator. All of us are required by law to participate in rigorous training, certifications, and ongoing professional development throughout the school year, which exceeds that of a general or special education par educator. In addition to having communication and behavior challenges, some of my students have difficulty processing the senses around them. What this looks like in my classroom is that we could be singing, and another student will be placing her fingers in her ears. I turn off the lights for a morning group, only to find that a student wants them open or opens the blinds. This happens frequently throughout the day, and whereas you or I may be able to ignore these annoying stimuli, these can lead to one or more students experiencing severe anxiety, which may result in a student yelling, running, hitting themselves, or others. My coworkers and I need to continue to teach in the classroom while at the same time dealing with any disruptive behaviors. Another common scenario that occurs is when I am working with a student, and the student becomes frustrated. Because of their limited communication skills, you tell me they don't understand the material or they need a break, I've gotten spit in the mouth, slapped in the face, punched, kicked, or have something thrown at me. Or they just sometimes run out of the workspace and become disruptive to the entire class. I did suffer a concussion and was out of work for two weeks because of a student becoming frustrated. But probably worse than getting injured myself is helplessly watching a frustrated student intentionally injure himself by pulling at their hair, pounding their fist in their forehead, or slamming their head into the desk or floor. Since I am at an elementary level, I have taught students their ABCs, 1, 2, 3s, and how to write. Over the course of time, they have progressed to becoming readers, becoming able to add and subtract, count money, tell time, and develop and write sentences. A few of them have been able to join their peers in their general education classrooms for some of their academics, orchestra, and even chorus. Despite what I endure, I love what I do. I understand my students' individuality and special needs. Children in STRIVE, as well as all special education programs, deserve quality care and additional support and resources to meet their needs. I urge you to reject Bob Cassley's budget and send his team back to the drawing board. His bare minimum budget does not adequately support essential services. Our students deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Aravinda Pillamari.
Call your next speaker.
Douglas Rudd, followed by Melissa Romano.
Good evening, sir. Name an address, please.
Douglas Rudd, 204 Steed Lane, Bel Air, Maryland.
Whenever you're ready.
29 years ago, I moved to Bel Air, Maryland for the first job of my career. It is the only job of my career. I work and serve as a middle school counselor at Bel Air Middle School. I bring that up because the plan was, come to Bel Air, take my first job, get tenure, go to greener pastures. Something wonderful happened that first year. I fell in love with this community. I fell in love with the kids that I serve and the families that I work with every day. For years, I've listened to the comments of, "Great bang for your buck, come to Harford County." You know, we have the, excuse me, we have the funding 24th in the state. Look at the bang for, look what we accomplished with our kids for the money that we spent. Things begin to unravel. Year after year, funding is an issue. And we sit around and we go, "I don't know what happened." I think we do. If we don't fund our school system, it becomes a huge problem. Before I became a school counselor, I had dreams of becoming a history teacher. I want to remind you of a couple things that happened in our past. About 200 years ago, there was something written called the Constitution. See, we broke away from England. Everybody knows the story, because it was a dictatorship, and we knew that the power couldn't rest with one person. We built into the Constitution checks and balances. Executive branch, judicial branch, legislative branch. You guys have that power to be the checks and balances for this budget that's proposed by Mr. Cassley. It is not appropriate. Sheriffs, county employees, public libraries, public schools, HCC. I don't know very many people that are happy with the underfunding that is taking place. Doesn't matter where you look, this county is looking for leadership. And I believe you folks are the ones that are the checks and balances that can right the wrongs that are taking place. Please take that into consideration. You have the power to do what is best for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am. Name an address, please.
Melissa Romano, 12 Cornflower Circle, Conawingo, Maryland. Thank you, county council members, for hearing me speak today. My name is Melissa Romano, and I have dedicated 24 years of my career to Harford County Public Schools, supporting special education of children with disabilities birth to age 21. I am currently the coordinator of special education for birth-to-five programs. This would be considered a central office position. My office is at Harford Academy, and I am in schools supporting teachers, children, and support staff. Currently, I oversee programs for 1,129 children with disabilities. In a county similar to this size, there are two to three people in my role coordinating the supports and services for this number of children. I just want to note this, as there is a misconception that we have too many central office staff. This is not accurate. Each one of the children with disabilities we support have either an individual family service plan or an individual education program. Each one of these documents is a legal binding document. Families can exercise their parental rights, including issuing a state complaint, mediation, or due process. These processes are financially burdensome, emotionally exhausting, and time-consuming for both families and schools. We must have the funding necessary to support our students with disabilities. This includes providing sufficient number of trained staff, resources, materials, and transportation. In February, Harford County presented to the Board of Education data highlighting the increasing number of children with disabilities with complex needs, especially young children. To expand access to high-quality, safe learning environments, Harford County has been expanding supports and services that are desperately needed for the complex needs of our children with and without disabilities. This year, we proposed additional teaching and support staff to address the needs of children with and without disabilities, especially with social, emotional, and behavioral needs. We are looking at supporting students and with growing needs, especially children with trauma. And when children have trauma, they often have reactions of flight for flight. So we've had a growing number of children that are communicating through physical aggression and eloping. We need to address the needs of our children, and we need the sufficient funding to do that. And if we do not, it's going to negatively impact our community, our children, our families, and our staff. Our staff are going to need for better working conditions if we're not able to provide them the support that they need. And our families and children here deserve this. Considering we are proposing additional staff to support the growing needs of children, it is unfathomable to me that we would need to consider cuts. I implore you to not approve the county executive's budget. Our children and staff need this funding with our growing needs in order to continue to provide safe, equitable, and effective programs for all of our children.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Dixon, can you go back to the speaker prior to?
Aravinda Pillamari.
Good evening, ma'am. Name an address.
Good evening. My name is Aravinda Pillamari, 712 South Shamrock, Bel Air. Thank you so much. I'm sorry I was late. I am also coming to express my support for fully funding Harford County Public Schools as well as other important public services such as parks and recreation, our libraries, services for senior citizens, public transit, and health. All of these are extremely important, and we will only, I mean, it's easy to take them for granted. Speaking from personal experience, until about five years ago, I was in an international job, and I've traveled a lot. And only, you know, when I became, you know, after the pandemic and becoming home-based, I could have lived anywhere. However, I went to Harford County Public Schools myself, and, you know, my parents also retired, could live anywhere. They still live here. I chose to live in Harford County. My daughter also graduated from Aberdeen High School. And what makes this a great place to live is that we have quality of life, good public services. We have open spaces. Our kids have opportunities. And if only by being a place that young families want to move to, can Harford County be a growing, thriving environment. Where, you know, even if my daughter isn't in school anymore, I want to support the schools. I want the schools to be strong. I want a thriving community around me. As, you know, as I hopefully one day may be able to retire. I don't want to feel that this is a, this community is getting deserted, and I should look for greener pastures. I think this has to be a good community for all generations. And I think we should not lose what we have. We should not undervalue it. If anything, you know, actually, when I was traveling around the world, I, you know, my daughter was homeschooled. We had a one-to-one student-teacher ratio. The kind of work that teachers are doing with the number of students they have in their class is it's just stretching the limits, and we should be looking at easing those limits. I have seen the, in fact, in the previous Board of Education meeting, I was, I had actually taken initiative to collect statements from students for Teacher Appreciation Week to write a card at the end of the year. And these are incredibly moving statements, and the kind of things that are possible if we provide teachers the kind of support they need, the staff, you know, the public transit, all the things that go into making it possible for students and teachers to shine. And in my, from my experience, I would say very high on that list is having adequate staff, well-qualified, well-paid, have a good ratio of teachers to students so that students have that opportunity to ask questions, have those moments that allow them to grapple with whatever is bothering them, which is just impossible when there's no time. If we can give the gift of time, then we will be investing in the future for Harford County. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Jenny Young, followed by Mark Perrott.
Good evening, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Jenny Young, and I, my address is 563 Kirkwall D. Way. Hello, I am here to speak as a concerned Harford County citizen, parent of three Harford County Public Schools students, and as a teacher for Harford County Public Schools. Ensuring that county funds in excess of those required for immediate needs are invested in the best interest of the county is a duty of the Harford County Executive outlined in the county charter. Our children are our greatest asset, and fully investing in their education is in the best interest of our county. As the fiscal year '24 budget proposal stands, it meets the state mandate for maintenance of effort. In other words, it meets the minimum requirement. It is dishonest to proclaim the budget, the proposed budget, fully funds HCPS when in reality it reduces the funds provided to HCPS from the fiscal year '23 budget and fails to fulfill the amount requested by HCPS for the fiscal year '24 budget. Mr. Cassley continues to emphasize the increase in state funding for the fiscal year '24, and note that combining that amount with the proposed funding and HCPS's surplus of funds will fully fund the HCPS budget. However, the increase in state funding is intended to supplement, not supplant existing funds, as schools move forward with the Maryland's Blueprint for Education Implementation. Additionally, Mr. Cassley grossly overinflated HCPS's surplus of funds. The budget proposal as stands will force HCPS to make changes that will directly impact students. In the budget proposal, in the comments concerning the sheriff's office, Mr. Cassley emphasizes that to attract and maintain the best law enforcement personnel, we must offer competitive salaries. The same is true for educators. At a time when the nation is facing a critical teacher shortage, HCPS will not be able to attract and retain highly effective teachers if they cannot offer competitive salaries. Beyond my concerns about the fiscal year '24 budget proposal, I am disheartened by Mr. Cassley's leadership style. Publicly attempting to discredit the school system and its leadership fosters a contentious relationship between the Harford County government and the school system and amongst Harford County citizens. No one wins in a blame game. In the words of John F. Kennedy, "Leadership and learning are indispensable to each other." With this in mind, invest time in learning about HCPS. Seek to build a relationship with HCPS leaders, educators, and students. Use these relationships to develop a comprehensive understanding of the school system's needs, and design a budget that fully funds those needs so that all HCPS students receive the quality education they deserve. And to those of you that have spent the time to build those relationships, they are noted and very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mark Perrott. Megan Fitzgerald, followed by Eva Fitzgerald.
Good evening, ma'am. Name an address, please.
Good evening. My name's Megan Fitzgerald, and my address is on file.
I need your address, ma'am.
3913 Longley Road, Abingdon, 21009.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, council members, Council President Vincenti. I am asking you to fully fund the Harford County Public Schools budget proposed by the Superintendent, Dr. Bolson. There are several reasons why our children and educators deserve a fully funded budget. Our students will thrive with full implementation of the HCPS blueprint. Obviously, the blueprint is expensive, but every bit worth it. Harford County students need more than just reading, writing, and math. They are living in a world with unprecedented challenges. We have a 24/7 economy and a constant influx of media, social and otherwise. Our historically underrepresented populations, our most vulnerable populations, need the wraparound services that are mandated by the blueprint. And our excellent educators deserve to have a competitive salary. As an HCPS parent, and most recently, an HCPS employee, you know, I have two children in the system. They're both autistic. And when they started in kindergarten, I made it my business to know everything about how to get them the best possible education, every support, every service available to them. And then that led me into the PTA and serving as president of the PTA. I mean, I eat, breathe, and live school for my kids to the degree that this year I jumped right in. I started getting paid for some of it. So there's that. But what I'm here to tell you is that in that journey, I've watched these amazing people put forth so much for our kids, and I've watched them be stretched so thin. There's not enough. There's not enough right now. You know, I came in, I'm a substitute teacher right now, and we're stretched. We're so stretched. And, you know, I'm very grateful for the education that my children get to receive right now. But I also know that I'm in a very privileged position where I've been able to seek all of those services and all of those supports. You know, other families in Harford County with kids with special needs, they deserve to know that those services are available. And currently, within the special education system, there's not enough people to do the work with the kids and make sure that the families are fully supported. Despite the fact that every IEP has it written in there that parents receive education and counseling and training on how to work with their neurodivergent children. We don't have it. So please, please, consider fully funding the budget. And it's my birthday. It's the only present that I'm asking for.
Thank you, ma'am.
Fully fund the budget.
Thank you. Good evening, ma'am. Name an address, please.
My name is Eva Fitzgerald. My address is 3913 Abingdon, 21009. Good evening, county council members. As a student who receives special education services, I find this proposed budget devastating. services, I find this proposed budget devastating. I am baffled by how narrow-sighted County Executive Cassely is being. If that much money gets cut, we will have a huge financial loss and our teachers will leave. And us students, we will suffer greatly. As a student who receives special education services, my biggest need is social skills support. And at school, it is my teachers that provide this. I get to meet with my special educator one-to-one every week. This benefits me because I am treated like a valued human and she gives me the room to blossom. She helps me practice conversations because she's helping me rebuild my social skills ever since the pandemic. If the budget is not fully funded, someone as wonderful as she is would not get the time or materials needed to support our neurodivergent students. Worse, she may quit due to the low salary. Who wouldn't? This will make me feel unnoticed and desperately alone. The tension of middle school is high and not having the ability to communicate effectively with my peers will bring serious negative consequences. What County Executive Cassely is suggesting is to be nineteen million dollars less than our last budget and thirty-nine million dollars less than the budget we need. That is salt to the aching wound. We already did not have enough to support all the needs we require and he's only taking away more of our resources. You cannot pass this budget. Please fully fund our schools.
Thank you, ma'am.
Rose Martino, followed by Sarah Olson.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Rose Martino, 1727 Pleasantville Route. Good evening, Council President and Council Members. Thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Rose Martino and I am the proud principal of Roy Williams Elementary School. I and we stand in solidarity with our law enforcement, Parks and Rec, and public library. We all work hard every day to support the growth, development, and safety of our children. I know you have heard and seen the frustration and outrage of every HCPS staff member across the county that cannot accept the current budget proposal that cuts HCPS's current operating budget by nineteen million dollars and does not provide the additional twenty million dollars requested. So tonight, I choose to shift the lens a bit. Tonight, I choose to highlight the amazing things that are occurring in our schools across the county, but specifically at Roy Williams Elementary located in the beautiful Aberdeen and Havity Grace communities that we serve. I'd like to begin with our instructional coach, Kristy Horn, who works with non-tenured teachers and will also support tenured teachers because she cares about our teachers and students and it's what she does. One of our kindergarten teachers speaks highly of Mrs. Horn and shared that Mrs. Horn's position has given our staff access to professional development in so many areas. While her focus is new staff, we have all benefited from her expertise and support. Our special educator, stand up, Mrs. Pritchard, and second grade teacher, Mrs. Cox, stand it up, are also here this evening and would like you all to know that they had a struggling reader who lacked confidence and was being closely monitored by our student support team. This student grew as a reader this year from the beginning of her first grade level to a beginning of a third grade level due to being in a co-taught classroom with these two amazing educators where they provided small group instruction, one-on-one support, and interventions that occurred consistently and daily. This child now volunteers to read aloud daily with confidence we've never seen before. Another student who had selective mutism and struggled to form relationships for the first half of the year can now be seen raising his hand during whole group lessons, playing with his peers at recess, and telling about his work proudly due to the caring environment that these teachers have created. Mrs. Janiski, stand up, is our GT teacher at our school and is a huge proponent of our Check and Connect program. This is a school-based program for our tier-three students that need an adult volunteer mentor to support them throughout the day to make good choices. These adults in the building develop strong relationships with these students and goals are tailored to each student's needs. One student, mm, who struggles with managing his emotions would often miss out on at least sixty minutes of instruction a day due to behaviors he displayed when feeling frustrated. At times, he would leave the classroom, rip up his work, and scream at his teachers. This student has now built genuine relationships with his teachers and classmates and has learned to make choices when he is upset. Proof of growth happened just the other day when he was upset and wanting to storm off and he said, "Please make a choice for me because I can't do it right now." He was able to spend five minutes in the peace corner and then transitioning easily back to his work. Mrs. Nissouda, please stand up, the teacher here this evening that has taught in Roy Williams for twenty-four years, wanted to share with you all that she has a student currently in second grade who struggled with reading all through first grade.
Ms. Martino, please bring your comments to close. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Sarah Olson, 995 Burn Drive in Havert Grace. So I am a resident at Havert Grace, but I'm also a fourth grade teacher with HCPS. And I wrote you guys an email a few weeks ago detailing my concerns about the impacts that this budget will have, especially as it relates to class sizes. So I wanted to thank the council members who are taking the time to read my email and for those of you who did in fact respond to that email. I appreciate it. I did want to take the time to reiterate those concerns in front of the members of the council as well for any parents who may be in attendance tonight. The cuts to our county budget impact a wide range of public services, all of which are valuable and necessary to a functioning society. I currently have thirty students in my class. My grade-level colleague recently received her thirty-first student. To be clear, that means there are thirty-one students in her class with one teacher who monitors everything. Imagine that this half of the room was yours alone. Could you monitor what every person in this room is doing effectively? Here's a more specific breakdown of what that looks like inside of a lesson. I have sixty minutes per day for a math lesson. Fifteen to twenty of those minutes are spent with whole group instruction, teaching something new with me at the board, as we've all sort of experienced. That leaves forty minutes for me to meet, meet with each student, slightly over one minute per child to assess whether they understood the skill, diagnose any misconceptions, and reteach the skill so that they do understand. If they were sick the day before, I need to fit yesterday's entire lesson into the span of that one minute. With this looming budget cut, class sizes will increase further. If your child's class currently has less than thirty students, that's awesome. But consider how a class size like mine would impact your child's learning. If your class looks similar to mine, the news is worse. Our class sizes will likely get even bigger. Would we ask a doctor to assess, diagnose, and treat patients in under a minute? Would that be effective? I'm here to speak on my experience in public schools, but I've also utilized the collections at the library to help teach my students. I've enjoyed time in our public spaces and my students talk about how much they enjoy their time in events hosted by the Parks and Rec Department throughout the county. These services are vital. Cutting the budget this significantly will impact people and specifically the children of the county in an equally significant way. For every action, there is an equal and opposite reaction, and in this case, the reaction will cost us the future successes of our children. Whether we choose to spend the money now on the proactive betterment of our children or spend it later on reactive services like policing and welfare, be assured that this money will be spent at some point either way. It makes sense to invest in a positive future through education and outside of school services. We all want success for the children and for our county. I know that this decision is a difficult one for you all to make and this budget did not come from you and I do not envy the position that you all find yourselves in. I sure wouldn't want to be the person tasked with this decision. So I hope that you can find a way to rework or reject the budget in a manner that will not impact our county so drastically. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Bill Montenary, followed by Melissa Williams.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Bill Montenary, 1801 Falls Staff Road, Bel Air. I am for Mr. Cassely's budget and encourage the council to vote yes as presented. Bob Cassely was elected over two to one to be a fiscally conservative person with our tax dollars. Two to one, to me, that's a mandate. I happened to watch last week's lone line meeting, or meeting online, excuse me. I heard and saw a lot of the hand-wringing, teeth-nashing, and insidious emoting. I didn't hear any facts, logic, or critical thinking, just a lot of over-the-top and passionate emoting. I was surprised no one claimed the county executive's budget would increase global warming. Hopefully, the county members, county council members see through this too. While negative commentators noted the budget would affect the kids, it seemed as I was watching it that a lot of the comments always turned to teachers raises, step increases, and retention. I'm not saying we don't have good teachers, we do. But hopefully, the county council members recognize this too. I believe a gentleman named Todd Pennington said that the real problem with the school budget has to do with how and what the superintendent is doing with his ninety million excess in the bank. If you have that much, you don't need more. If things are as dire as some of these teachers claim, throwing more money at it will not fix anything. It sounds like the problem is with the superintendent and the teachers' union. Financial problems, especially with this large reserve, are always the fault of top management. In fact, it sounds like they can go with less. One of the comments I heard also was the class, if the budget's not, if the budget is approved, the class size was going to increase. How does that work? Do we physically remove classrooms out of a building with a smaller budget? Does the building actually shrink? Where do these unused classrooms go? Do they go up in the cloud? In closing, I would like to say that I've talked to a lot of parents. Some have children in public schools, some have already gotten out of the public schools. Most of them do not want to see an increase in taxes. As we all know, with the economy, the way it's been the last couple of years, many, many people have not gotten any increases in their salaries. A lot of people are hurting. Increasing taxes is going to impact everybody. In closing, as for those who don't support Mr. Cassely's budget, when you get your annual tax bill, feel free to pay more than you are being charged. Send in as much over that amount as you want. Put your money where your mouth is. The rest of us say thanks. I'm Bill Montenary. I approve this message.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Williams, 1722 Touch of Gold Drive, Havert Grace. Good evening, President Vincenti, county council, distinguished county council members. My name is Melissa Williams, the very proud principal of Joppetown High School and the first vice president of the Administrative Union ABSAG. First, I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. Respectfully, I stand before you as a resident and educator in Hartford County for twenty-nine years and a proud parent of a Hartford County Public Schools graduate. During my twenty-nine-year tenure, I've experienced a wide variety of economic times, the good and the bad, with fully funded budgets and with budget deficits, but never have I seen a proposed budget like the one proposed by Mr. Cassely. Thankfully, for the past few years, as a system, we've received support from you, the county council, and Mr. Glassman after the eleven-year drought of budget shortfalls. I'm excited to say that we were making significant forward process, progress, even with the COVID setback. This year, we finally had a lot of the necessary resources. But the county executive's proposed budget would not only bring this project, progress to a screeching halt, the lack of funding will significantly hinder our school system's ability to meet the diverse needs of our learners. This immense setback will be illustrated in the devastation of our students who are surrounded by thirty-plus peers in a classroom taught by less qualified educators. As a principal, I have watched teachers struggle under the load of increased class sizes. The impact comes beyond the school day, when additional assignments need to be collected, assessed, the data analyzed, and responsive instruction developed. Please note, our educators will not leave Hartford County due to, due to this increased workload, but because of its effect on their ability to do what they signed up for, provide rigorous quality instruction to our students. They will leave in search of a county or a system that clearly supports them and prioritizes education. Just last week, I spoke to an aspiring teacher who shared with me without hesitation that he would not consider teaching in Hartford County because the county does not prioritize education. Please send the proposed budget back to the county executive to illustrate to this young man and to our entire community that Hartford County does value education. Our students need highly-qualified teachers in our classrooms. Without that highly-qualified teacher, that classroom is just a room. We need highly-qualified teachers in those classrooms and we all need a budget that will support forward progress and not regression. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Nicole Byers, followed by Lee Bondrell.
Names again, please.
Nicole Byers, followed by Lee Bondrell.
Call your next speaker.
Cynthia Popper, followed by Nadia Garcia.
Excuse me. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address.
Lee Bondrell, 638 Gerelock Place in Bel Air. I wear many hats, the most important of which is mom. I have two children in our district and I left Arizona so that they would have a better education, so that they wouldn't be held hostage to defunding in the way that this district has started to do. So I am very disappointed in the way that this county executive has decided to fund or not fund our budget. I am a teacher of twenty-seven years. I have been in Hartford County for eight of those and I am a proud English teacher at Edgewood High School. I have my National Board certification. I help interns from colleges get experience in the classroom. And the problem is going to be that people who have their children are not going to stay in our district and our schools will end up further defunded and he will create the crisis that he is predicting. I want to know why we are tenth in the state of counties for wealth and yet we are twenty-fourth in counties for per pupil spending. I would like to know why there is such a spread of misinformation. I continually hear about the fund balance and yet no one mentions the county's fund balance. No one mentions that there is over fifty million dollars in our fund balance that is already allocated to other projects. The amount is not really there and it's the misinformation for me that is the biggest problem. And the underfunding is not just the thirty-nine million that has been spoken of. It's actually over seventy if you count the capital projects that are also being defunded in this budget. And it's not just education. All of the public services, public services, that is what this county should be about. That is where the money should go. Education is a foundation. Safety is a foundation. All of libraries are public good. This is where our money needs to go. Please reject this budget and do the right thing for this county.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Cynthia Popper, 952 Angel Valley Court, Edgewood. Good evening, Council President, lady and gentlemen of the council. Again, I have to apologize for you taking the blame for the actions of another. You have all patiently and politely sat and listened to the public while the county executive continues to espouse his bare minimum truths and claims that he is being attacked by those that are unhappy with his bare minimum budget for our public schools. Well, let's talk about those actual facts. Hartford County is budgeting fifty-three point four percent of its budget on education, but the education section of the budget doesn't just cover HCPS, but Hartford County Public Libraries and Hartford Community College. HCPS is budgeted to receive only forty point two percent of the county budget for its operational budget. And since 2015, county revenues have increased by fifty-five point two percent. The HCPS portion of the county revenues has only increased by thirty-six point three percent during that same time. In 2021, HCPS was twenty-second out of twenty-four in per pupil overall cost, not spending, cost, making HCPS one of the most efficient districts in the state. We know how to squeeze every drop out of a dollar. We know how to squeeze every drop out of a dollar and have been doing it for many, many years. Let's talk about fund balance. HCPS's unassigned fund balance is not 90 million, as is continually being falsely touted, but 36.8 million. 55 million of the 90 million is assigned, and of that 59 million, 24.7 million isn't even taxpayer money, but employee healthcare premiums for the Healthcare Rate Stabilization Fund and student and parent funds raised for student activity funds. But HCPS isn't being afforded the luxury of not spending down its fund balance in the same way the county executive won't spend down the county fund balance. Apparently, only bare minimum Bob can follow general and standard accounting practices. Many speakers are linking the budget to current test scores by comparing them to test scores of the past. Our standardized tests have changed three times in the last seven years. Three different tests, two different sets of delivery methods, and three different sets of standards. No way to accurately compare them. Do we recognize that test scores could be better? Sure. Are we preaching doom and gloom for our students? Absolutely not. At some point, you need to apply the old adage, "You get what you pay for." And Hartford County has been dwindling at the bottom of the per pupil expenditures for decades. Imagine the difference adequate funding might make. We need to do better for our kids and our schools. Please reject the proposed budget and demand that the county executive do better for the children of Hartford County. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Nadia Garcia, 202 Trellis Court, Abington. Good evening, county council president and all members. My name is Nadia Garcia. I have been working as a reading paraeducator for three years at Abington Elementary School. I work with the school's lowest-performing readers from kindergarten through fifth grade by providing daily reading intervention in 30-minute blocks of time throughout the school day. Now, I am going to compare the effects of student academic growth from last year to this year. Last year, I was repeatedly pulled to cover as a substitute teacher, and this year, I am able to help all the students with reading intervention. Last year, I was pulled 48% of reading intervention time to cover for the teachers in the building. There was no insufficient number of substitute to cover the need for the teachers. Being pulled as a substitute resulted in me having to cancel my daily reading intervention, and those students suffer by not receiving these instructions they needed and deserved. Not receiving the reading intervention services impacts their test scores, reading growth over time, and confidence in all subject areas. This year, we were granted additional substitutes. I have been pulled only two times for other classroom teachers. Therefore, I am able to meet with my reading intervention groups consistently. Student data shows increase in mastery of phonics and comprehension skills as compared to last year. Last year, I was not able to finish teaching phonics skills and any comprehension skills that those students needed. This year, I have taught the students surpass all those skills. Not only that, I have moved into the next level of phonics and higher-level comprehension skills. As you see, those lower-performing readers need reading intervention time to show consistent growth in reading and other subjects. If the proposed budget is passed, there will be a lack of funding to provide a coverage in the building. Again, I will most likely be pulled to substitute. Then, the student will not receive the reading intervention services they need and deserve. Please consider pulling funding our schools for the sake of our students' academic success. Our students are Hartford County's future leaders. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Christina Tabler, followed by Andrew Cassley.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Hi there. My name's Christina Tabler, and I live on 1021 Young Avenue in Bel Air. I am in favor of fully funding the education budget. I'm here because I believe that the needs of families are central to Hartford County. There's been lots of discussion and debate, but at the end of the day, we need to remember that it is our responsibility to create opportunities that enable all children to succeed. Community services such as schools, libraries, and parks all make a county worth living in by providing children and families with resources and enrichment. The MSD's Division of Assessment, Accountability, and Performance released a report this March. Unfortunately, the largest class size average in the state for elementary, middle, and high school altogether goes to Hartford County with an average of 26 students. We also have the highest elementary school class size average when compared to all other counties in Maryland, at 33 students for a classroom in an elementary school. I'm someone who grew up in Hartford County. I graduated from Simonton Wright High School in 2015 with a 4.1 GPA while taking several AP courses, joining three different honor societies and several clubs, and performing as a first-chair clarinetist in the marching band and concert band. With all the opportunities that HCPS was able to provide me with, I was able to receive a full scholarship to Hartford Community College as a first-generation college student. Throughout my four years of college, I stayed in Hartford County, earned a spot on the All-Maryland Academic Team, and even received a national award from Coca-Cola for my academics, leadership, and service to the community. But about five years ago, when I went to go try to, you know, get my first job, start my career as a teacher, that was when we lost 200 teaching positions. It didn't matter, the effort that I put in those past four years, how much I wanted to give back to the community that had given so much to me. Because at the end of the day, they couldn't retain the teachers that they already had. So I went to Baltimore County for a few years, got some more experience, and like, hey, I'm ready to go back to the place that I grew up in, the place that I love. And now, here we are, several years later, seeing a similar situation happen. There are so many bright and talented individuals within this community. Everyone deserves access to the resources that we have been able to benefit from. We are already doing a huge disservice to families in Hartford County by placing our children in overcrowded and underfunded classrooms, especially at the elementary level for our youngest students. A high-quality education is a need for all citizens of Hartford County, and we deserve so much more than the bare minimum for all of our community services. I'm urging you to say no to the current budget and revise it so that children and families can succeed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Good evening, council. For the record, Andrew Cassley, 1737 Desford Road, Havant Grace, Maryland. Thanks for allowing me to speak this evening. Eight years ago, I feared my own children would move out of our state to avoid the never-ending tax increases. At the same time, Larry Hogan launched his career or his campaign for governor. Many people said that a Republican could never win in a state that was controlled by Democrats. But as it turns out, the voters were more concerned about the continual tax increases and growing debt by the former spend-happy governor launching Hogan into office. Back when Hogan took office, he appointed a whole new set of departmental leaders to oversee education, law enforcement, and other agencies. His new unified team shared his vision of fiscal responsibility and rooting out departmental inefficiencies. This common goal and purpose led to his success. Over the next eight years, we were able to tighten the budgets of state agencies and reduce wasted spending. This strategy allowed us to climb out of a more than $300 million deficit and build a surplus in our state coffers without increasing taxes. Today, our county executive faces the same challenge of producing a responsible budget, but without that supportive team. In contrast to Hogan, our county executive has inherited those at the top of these local agencies with their own political agendas, making disingenuous attacks and even taking the extreme position that if you don't give me all the money I want, I've been defunded. This irresponsible view of visionary spending, where you worry about the bill later, is impacting a whole new generation of folks entering the workplace. Do we really want to saddle them with additional taxes? The young Edgewood Middle School teacher who spoke to you last week was right. Today's teacher shortage has nothing to do with their salaries and everything to do with a hostile classroom environment due to disruptive and disrespectful students and a lack of support. Our superintendent is directly responsible for the policies resulting in teachers leaving the profession. This issue cannot be solved by throwing money at it. Baltimore City has proven that. We live in an age where we can no longer rely on volunteers to fill the ranks of our medical first responders. We wouldn't dream of asking the Sheriff's Department to rely on volunteers. So building our EMS must take priority, and phasing it in is really not an option. So when the dust settles, you find yourself in the same place as the county executive. Do you approve this budget? Or do you cast it aside for a more visionary approach where basically, we may be increasing taxes? The decision is yours to make, but make no mistake, our citizens will face the consequences of your decision. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Crystal Rufenat, followed by Elsa Maed.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Crystal Rufenat, 700 Heston Court, Bel Air, Maryland. I just wanted to speak tonight in response to Executive Cassley's budget update that was recently published and some other social media claims justifying his budget decisions. He claims that this is a responsible budget that maintains essential services, that we are in fiscally challenging times. It's important to say no to excessive and unnecessary spending, and that we need to focus on needs versus wants. The reality is, the combined cut of over $70 million to the Board of Education request will not allow HCPS to maintain essential services. He mentions the Hartford County Spending Affordability Committee's recommendations, but he's not responsive to citizens questioning numbers and projections based on data from other experts. He doesn't provide explanation as to the requests from the Board of Education that he perceives to be a need versus a want. He just simply states that the Board of Ed request is excessive and unnecessary. He claims he's being attacked and that he's standing firm against an onslaught, that his critics are asking he increase taxes or pretend we will see dramatic growth from tax revenue. He isn't being attacked. Citizens are questioning how his proposed budget is so far out of alignment from his own stated values and the values of Hartford County citizens. The majority of his critics aren't asking for tax increases or expecting dramatic new growth. We disagree with his assessment. Our county is in a precarious situation with revenue and that we will see substantially worse fiscal decline than other areas of the state and nation. In response to claims about our superintendent, it's my understanding our superintendent does live here in Hartford County. But even if he didn't, Hartford citizens are not simple-minded enough to believe someone living in another county translates to inability to serve well. We've had executive leaders in this system who have lived here their whole lives who have not served us well. The $90 million fund balance number is not correct as it relates to discretionary spending, which is how Executive Cassley is presenting it. He posts details about the county fund balance and talks about how funds should be used. It's our duty to maintain a certain level of that fund balance. And then he suggests we drain the fund balance and suggests that we spend it on items that he says should never be spent out of a fund balance, such as reoccurring costs like salaries. He claims the state has mandated more and not provided funding. In his next breath, he talks about how there's an increase in state funding and implies it's discretionary, as he fails to say those funds are earmarked for specific expenditures. He has a lot to say about student achievement, but he doesn't speak to any of the database factors most influential to student achievement. The Board of Ed request is not ambitious, it's not frivolous, and it does not provide sufficient funding, as he claims. The $22 million more this year number is incorrect. It's based on estimates he did not update, as, you know, previous executives have. He claims he's being attacked by those addicted to unsustainable growth, and he claims that the Glassman administration and those of you who served on this council went on a spending spree.
Ma'am, please bring your comments to a close.
We encourage you to vote no to this budget and send it back. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Elsa Maed. Andrew Maeton, followed by Joy Clark.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Andrew Maeton, 1906 Castle Road, Forest Hill. I'm here today as a representative for MCEA, the union for Hartford County's general government. You know, and our main point is that, you know, the budget claims to, one, provide a retention incentive as well as increasing public safety and public health. What the county executive has offered is a cost-of-living adjustment of 1.5% effective on July 1st, and then maybe one more, 1.5% in January. That is not something that retains employees. You know, the cost of living in Hartford County over the past year has increased by 5.3%, and, you know, the way things are going, it could probably go higher. You know, I also wanted to take this time to thank all the teachers in the room. You know, my parents moved us here for the education, you know, from Ricehurst Town to Hartford County, went to Hickory, went to Southampton, went to Simonton Wright, and then went to Hartford Community College. So, you know, we stand behind you. You know, I think when Cassley, you know, made the claim that, hey, if this is the budget that you want, you know, we're going to have to raise taxes by $500, it was a transparent attempt to drive the public employees against, you know, the public and drive a wedge between the two. But he can't. That's not going to happen. The public employees are the public. This is, you know, the county to live in because of the investment previous administrations have made in the public sector. And that keeps the whole thing going. So again, you know, call on us, call on MCEA for support. We have your back. Because, you know, in addition to that, whether, for better or for worse, I'm your fault. So, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Hi, it's Joy Clark, 418 Chrisfield Drive of Abington. Good evening to all the county council members, and thank you for having me speak. So I am the vice president for MCEA Council 610 here in Hartford County. And this year, I sat down with our team to prepare for negotiating and collective bargaining with the county this year. So I was a little bit, well, I think we were all a little bit disheartened and disappointed when we found out that our negotiating was not actually negotiating at all because they didn't even want to discuss the budget with us. They didn't want to have any discussion about what we would like to see happen for cost of living for our employees or for our merit increases, if we were to get anything like that. We weren't even allowed to negotiate that. We were told it's going to be this 1.5%. So, to begin with, I'm very disappointed that we weren't able to negotiate this year at all, and that was kind of shut out by this budget. We speak on behalf of 413 employees who are bargaining members for us. And some of those employees are, obviously, we're not teachers. Thank you so much, all of you teachers. But we are 911 dispatchers, we are paramedics, we are Parks and Rec employees, we are water and sewer employees. We have all the other jobs in the county that continue to be done every day. We still serve every county citizen that lives here. When you have a problem where your water won't come on, you pick up the phone and you call Water and Sewer. When you need an ambulance to your house, you pick up the phone and you call 911, and we send the ambulance and the paramedics there. So those services are still very much needed. And to justify just a 1.5% COLA when the county is in a much larger budgetary problem with spending, you know, you can't go to the grocery store with your 1.5% COLA and still buy all of the things that you were buying. You're paying more for- You're paying more for electricity, you're paying more for gas, you're paying more for your housing. If you are a renter, I'm very sorry for you because you're paying tons more for that rental this year. Everything is more. Apparel, clothing, prescription drugs, medical care, everything costs more. And the one point five percent, even if there is going to be an additional, which hasn't been promised to us at all later, will not cover any of those expenses. I, I am just requesting that you please send back this budget and have it reworked, however that needs to be done, so that you can take care of the county employees the way that they need to be taken care of before they decide that they need to leave Hartford County and go somewhere else where they might be taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Heather Armiger, followed by Dancy, I'm sorry, Daisy Shook.
Call your next speaker.
Daisy Shook. Ryan Burby, followed by Chris Frickman.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Hi, as most of you know, my name's Ryan Burby. I now live at seventeen oh one Mountain Road. Aaron, hear my rep now. I'm not even gonna get into a lot of discussing the county executive's utter puking display of stupidity that he calls budget. The revenues are, are slashed and not accurate. You all can add it up, you have aids to figure that out. The fund balance for HCPS is not ninety million dollars, and I know that because five years ago, I made them spend virtually all, all their fund balance just to honor the contract they negotiated with us after we got a compromised budget from the county executive. The nonsense about the superintendent, he's probably the best superintendent in the state. He walked into a huge fight between every single government entity and has done the best that any superintendent has to make all the needs of everyone met. I'm gonna make a few promises. One, I no longer represent anyone but myself. So I don't have to play nice in sandbox no more. So if you thought I was ruthless before and relentless before, I assure you, there's a decided change. I've been very ill, is why you haven't seen more of me. But anyone who votes for this budget, I assure you, you will have a primary challenger in your party. I assure you, and Dionne, yours will be highly organized and will be able to beat you.
Mr. Burby.
I also assure you this. You don't have to look around to see the, do anything but look at the Democrat, demographics to see the impact that you will make by not funding this budget properly. There's a dearth of teachers between my age and about thirty because they all left. We fought this fight for a decade. We can't handle it again. Never before has anyone proposed spending less, less than the previous year. That is insane. I mean, it's beyond the pale. David Craig did some crazy stuff, but in his wildest, unlucid, fugue state dreams, he never came up with a budget that funded us at less. It just doesn't make any sense. I'm not gonna advocate against the other organizations because the sheriffs have been getting the shaft for the entire scope of their existence, as have the county workers. You need collective bargaining, county workers, talk to your state representatives. I am gonna say this. I am gonna say this. If you wanna look at waste in any budget, the first place you look is overtime. There's not a single teacher that gets overtime. There's not a single administrator that gets overtime. Excluded employees can work overtime for free. That means command staff, administrators, anybody who is an excluded employee instead of an hourly employee. That's where you make up budget shortfalls.
Please bring your comments to a close, Mr. Burby.
Please. Don't swim in the slime trail that you've been given.
Thank you, Mr. Burby.
Do the right thing.
Thank you.
Chris Frickman, followed by James Ramsey.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
I'm James Ramsey at three oh nine South Park Street, apartment A nine in Aberdeen. I've heard some bad reasons for the proposed underfunding of the schools. Test scores are low. Okay, so will they get better with less funding? Isn't that a bit like saying that beatings will continue until morale improves? Superintendent's salary is too high. Okay, even if we grant that's true, underfunding the schools is not gonna fix that. State money will compensate for the shortfall. We've heard, heard some other people talking about that. To the extent that state money is available, it's earmarked for specific things. And I think I remember Wade Seawell mentioning that if it's used for other things, Hartford County may lose that funding in the future because it's only supposed to go to certain things like the blueprint projects and stuff. We can rate the rainy day funds, to the extent those funds are even available. They're for emergencies and dealing with unforeseen problems, using them for maintenance, cost of living increases and so on. Well, that's been done, as the last guy mentioned, but it's not sustainable. And ultimately, it makes the schools less prepared for dealing with the unexpected. We can kick the can down the road for going repairs and live with deteriorating facilities like Aberdeen High School's unusable field track. Again, this is also not sustainable and is likely to be even more expensive than long run than fixing things now that currently need fixing. While I don't expect the county executive to be a rubber stamp for the Board of Education, I do expect him to listen to them and take their knowledge about the public schools and their needs into account. That does not seem to be happening. So, yeah, reject Castle Lee's budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Keeney, followed by Rachel, Rachel Delauter.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Michael Keeney, seventy-one twenty-seven Rutherford Road, Windsor Mill, Maryland. So thank you for having me tonight. My name is Michael Keeney. I'm the Labor Relations Specialist for the Maryland Classified Employees Association. Just heard one of our members, Joey Clark, who works for DES, and my colleague, Andrew Maetin. So I'll be real brief. First of all, I think you'll agree that Hartford County citizens are extremely blessed. You have the most talented people. Now, I travel all over the state, and I see a lot of workforces, but you guys are really blessed because these guys do a great job, they're dedicated, and they're underpaid, but they work here anyway. So again, you know, fund the schools, fund the sheriffs, and fund the general workforce. When you call nine-one-one, your baby's turning blue, you better have somebody on the other end to help you. So having said that, please, send it back to Mr. Castle Lee and tell him to negotiate in good faith. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address.
Rachel Delauter, seven-seven-zero Shallow Ridge Court, Abingdon, Maryland. I'm not a finance person, but I feel like Bob Castle Lee is either giving false information about the school board budget on purpose, or he doesn't understand simple fundamental facts that even someone like myself, who has no background in finance, can manage to grasp. He's either deliberately lying to the citizens of Hartford County, or he generally doesn't understand the job he's been elected to do. Both are equally terrifying to me. He said Hartford County schools will be getting twenty-two million, I believe, I could be wrong on that number. Money, but that money is specifically earmarked to be spent on specific projects. And if Hartford County Public Schools do not spend that money on those specific projects the state earmarked it for, we won't get that money in future years. But we will still have to continue to pay for those projects that are legally required. We are also legally required in the next three years to start paying our teachers a salary of sixty thousand dollars a year. And good, they deserve that. They deserve more as far as I'm concerned. Our teachers and staff are amazing, but if we don't fund the budget, how are we going to pay them? We're gonna have forty kids do a classroom, and you know what happens with overcrowding in our classrooms. Good teachers leave because why wouldn't they go somewhere where they get paid more, have less students, and are respected and honored the way that they should be? What happens to our children? We end up with overcrowding in the classrooms. People are worried about test scores being low? What do you think's gonna happen when we lose good teachers and we have overcrowded classrooms? People worry about, oh, you didn't fund this, you didn't spend that. Well, if we don't fund the infrastructure of our buildings, then you're gonna have a problem. You're gonna have roof collapses on a bunch of kids, and that's a lawsuit. Our communication systems go down, and parents can't get the information that they need in a timely manner in a case of emergency. What happens if our video security systems stop working and we can't afford to pay to fix them? And there's a shooting because the security system wasn't fixed? You have to fully fund the school system. Everyone says that education is the top priority and that our kids are the top priority. I'm asking you to prove it and vote no to Bob Castle Lee's budget. It's also Teacher Appreciation Week, and the Hartford County Facebook webpage has asked everyone to say thank you to our teachers. And I think, like myself, most people in the public are tired of politicians and their empty words. Don't thank them with words. It's as empty and meaningless as thoughts and prayers at this point. Thank them by funding the budget.
Thank you, ma'am.
Derek Noes, followed by Cheryl Adams.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
My name is Derek Noes, and the address is eleven oh three Jeffrey Terrace, live in Bel Air, Maryland. So I come here today with a rational mind, but also a sensitive heart, because I understand all of the frustrations here regarding the education budget and even the public safety. I understand that education is important because children are the future, but at the same time, we also can't abandon principle in pursuit of passion. We have to remember that there are economic consequences for every dollar that's spent in our economy, local, state, and federal. We have to remember that no budget is above the law of economics. And if you take a look at the economy right now, the Fed is raising interest rates, inflation continues to rise, and yet the economy is uncertain. Yet the calls are for more spending, it's never less. And so I think it's important that we remember that austerity measures are critical. It's important that we balance our budget during times of uncertainty. Because I'm already doing that, and a lot of people are. We talk about housing costs, healthcare costs. If the people are going to be budgeting their costs, then so should the government. They are representative of the electorate. They should be cutting the budget just as much as we are. And it's times like these where austerity measures are necessary, and it's, you have to make tough decisions. Unfortunately, we put ourselves in this position with all of this inflation. We've been throwing money at the issue for so long. I think the anger is misdirected. We talk about all of these things that are happening, but yet the county has been getting increased funding for so long. So the real question is, why, what is going on with the funding that's currently being allocated? Is it being misappropriated? Is it being misused? Where is it being allocated? So that tells me that it's being appropriated toward inappropriate functions. It's not being appropriated properly. We have to remember that the government, unfortunately, that's why the DMV is so slow, they're not motivated to perform better. Because there's no profit-loss mechanism, they're a monopoly, there's no competition, and so therefore, there's no incentive to improve. I think the idea that the government is the only way to fund education is a very dogmatic and closed-minded position to take. We have to remember there are alternatives. We have home schools, we have private schools, we have vouchers, there's so many different options. And the argument that affordability, well, the average person that's homeschooled, and I believe it's sixty-five thousand dollars a year, it doesn't take a rich person to do this. It is possible if you're willing to make sacrifices and budget, because that is a part of parenting. You have to make sacrifices. And there are other ways that it can be funded. When there is demand, the market will supply. There's all this talk about four hundred-plus teacher jobs being lost. The market will supply. And so I think we have to listen to reason and remember that at the end of the day, there will be consequences from the Glassman administration if we don't focus on cutting our spending. So I urge consistency from the council, and I also urge consistency from the superintendent and the sheriff, because I can't tell who is more entitled asking for funding. So please, vote for this budget and ensure that we have sustainable economic growth in the future for the county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Cheryl Adams, twenty-twenty-five Colgate Circle, Forest Hill. I'm here again to add my voice to the many others who share my feeling of displeasure at the lack of funds that are being allocated to HCPS for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four. At a time when public education is so desperately needed by the children of Hartford County, cutting their budget is unconscionable. Between the demands required by the state and recovering from a gold, a global pandemic, now is not the time to take such drastic measures. To do so sends the message that public education is not a priority in Hartford County. The impact of such action will not easily be overcome anytime soon and will set us on a course we do not wish to travel. I also want to say that as a parent who has had kids that came through school, I have no interest in homeschooling. I never did. Thank you, teachers. I think, I think our, our tax dollars are much better spent on public education, giving the educators that are experienced, that understand the curriculum and know how to teach, do it. I think we get way more bang for our buck than any of these other alternatives, and I think that continued support for public education is the way to go. I also want to add my voice to those who are advocating for the Sheriff's Office Academy and for Parks and Rec. These are important foundations of any healthy community. So thank you for your time and attention. I look forward to a reworked budget to include the funds requested by HCPS. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Tina Graff, followed by Heather Morris.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address.
Tina Graff, seventeen thirty-two Boggs Road, Forest Hill. Happy Teacher Appreciation and Nurses Week. My name is Tina Graff, and I am the School Safety Liaison at Falston High School, where I've been working for the past fifteen years. First, I want to thank Mr. Pennman for attending our board meeting, Board of Education meeting on Monday night. Although you're not our school liaison, I am sincerely grateful for your interest and your presence. President Vincenti, thank you for acknowledging Teacher Appreciation Week last night during your public comment. I also want to thank Mr. Bennett for his public comments citing numerous mistakes that our county executive is perpetuating. We may not always agree with each other, but I too expect honesty, transparency, and integrity when scrolling through a social, through a government social media site and direct emails to me. I probably spend half my day as a school safety liaison dealing with drama. Who said what about who? Screenshots, Snapchat, airdrops, and general teenage immaturity, and I expect it. I do not, however, expect a grown man to behave that way. What I've watched over the past month on Hartford government social media sites and from Mr. Castle Lee's account is as offensive and painful as any of the teenage drama that I deal with every day. If this was truly a financial issue, I may be more inclined to support this budget, but it's not. Our county executive does not support public education. Our county executive does not agree with the blueprint. Our county executive thinks like some of the public that we are indoctrinating their children. Believe me, I can't turn your gay, your kid gay, just as I cannot get them to come to school on time. The comments he has made about our budget have been inaccurate and still have not been corrected. Mr. Castle Lee has made cheap shots at our superintendent, including where he lives and not having a personal stake in our local economy. He has inserted himself in situations where he doesn't belong and publicly posted about our schools to incite division. And as much as I am disheartened to see these nefarious social media posts, I'm hopeful to see the public support shown for our schools. I will end my comment, as I used to do when I spoke at these meetings, by extending an invitation to all of you to visit my school. A former councilman took me up on my offer last year, but he didn't visit any of our students or staff to see what great things we do every day. He only wanted to visit our library to find porn. He found none. Please come and visit my school or any of our schools and fully support all of us in what we do for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address.
Heather Morris, five-six-one Cressy Road, Bel Air, Maryland. Good evening, County Council President and council members. I am the Literacy Specialist at Roy Williams Elementary School. The challenges of the past few years have affected innumerable children. One of those children is a fifth grader at Roy Williams. When COVID hit, he was a second grade student that was reading half a year below grade level. With the challenges of online education, his reading gaps grew. By the beginning of fourth grade, he was reading two years below grade level. Traditionally, core instruction in fourth grade is focused on on comprehension. With that in mind, teaching the same ways in past years was not going to be sufficient enough to close the gaps. Over the course of the next two years, he had small group instruction and interventions that focused on both grade-level expectations as well as the remedial phonics instruction that he had missed. The extra support that he needed had to come from many directions. His instruction had to be intentional, integrated, as well as supplemental. He needed strong, experienced educators that worked with knowledgeable and dedicated specialists and interventionists. While this student has not yet made grade-level proficiency in fifth grade, he's heading into middle school having overcome significant reading deficits. It is our great hope that by fully funding the HCPS budget request, our middle schools will be able to retain their exceptional, experienced educators that will have class sizes small enough that they're able to tailor their instruction to his educational needs, so the gaps created by COVID can be further closed. The teachers at Roy Williams and across the county work hard for our children. We want to make sure that the students are provided with the best education and supports in order to be successful when they graduate. As educators, we are all about the children, and we want to make sure that everyone else in leadership positions within Harford County also understand the importance of the children and our future. Our central leadership team has done amazing jobs thinking creatively to support our schools, but the time has come to expect more support from our county leadership. As you can see, we have many educators here tonight, and I'm proud of our staff at Roy Williams that they have sacrificed their time with their families to be here tonight. We are all here tonight to respectfully communicate that we, as educators, are tired of having to fight for what is needed for our children of Harford County Public Schools. We are tired of being disrespected by the current county executive with inaccurate and demeaning social media posts. We all work very hard, and we don't mind as we know we are making a difference. Please make a difference for us. Please show your respect for our profession and ensure we are funded at the amount that was accurately and respectfully presented to this council. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Delane Lewis, followed by Richard Metzger.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address.
Hello. Delane Lewis, 2714 Pemberton Ridge. Thank you, everyone, for your attention tonight. I just want to start by saying, you know you have a losing argument when you have to trot out Baltimore City. Approaching this process with honesty is critical. We cannot analyze or compromise unless we're all using the same data. So, I urge you not to take the information from the county executive at face value. As a basic premise, he has stated that the state is funding the schools such that we are 22 million over our current funding levels. This is a $20 million mistake he has made because he has relied upon proposed funding data instead of updating to actual funding amounts. That's some pretty sloppy work. Then, it's important to understand that much of the state funds are tied to mandates and are not available for general operating expenses. Then, when discussing the HCPS fund balance, the county executive selects a number that includes funds that are already allocated. The actual fund balance is closer to 36 million, not the 90 or 92, he says, and is intended for one-time expenses. And since the school system self-insures for their health insurance, the fund's important to maintain a reasonable amount in the fund balance to help with any unexpected expenses or costs there. When the county executive chooses to speak about his fund balance for the county, he doesn't use the original fund balance of 211 million. He talks about unallocated amounts, which are closer to about 25 million right now. So, he's selective in the language that he uses, in the situation that he's in, and what it does is it confuses people. We've seen a lot of people come up and talk about the $90 million. It's effective, right? So, they think the school system's not doing a good job. The county executive recently belittled a fund balance transfer request of about 22 million that included things like a dock at Hartford Glen. Instead of focusing on the over 6 million that was in that request, that was critically needed to replace batteries that are part of the IT systems, the technology director described this system as five years beyond its life expectancy, and that the batteries are swelling and smoking. This system is not just for, like, internet access. It supports security systems, phone systems, and it's integral to the safe operations of the entire public school system. So, you know, once again, you know, choosing how he frames it to belittle the school system instead of focusing on serious problems that are imminent.
Ma'am, please bring your comments to a close.
Anyway, please reject the county executive's budget and fully fund Harford County Public Schools.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Richard Metzger, 2405 Edwards Manor Drive, Forest Hill, Maryland. Ladies and gentlemen, I stand before you this evening to address a dire issue that is currently plaguing Harford County, and that is the proposed slashing of the school budget. This is a matter that affects every single one of us in this community, and it is high time that we take a closer look at the root cause of this problem. Many of us have been left bewildered and dismayed by the recent actions of Mr. Casely and his political cronies, who have been pushing for significant cuts to the school budget. In doing so, they have shown a complete disregard for the well-being and the future of our children who rely on public schools. I own a mortgage company, and I've been raised in public schools, so public education is important to me and my family. So, why is this happening? Why are our political leaders seemingly more interested in playing games and scoring political points than in doing what is right for our community and our children? The answer lies in the fact that other political priorities have taken precedence over the needs of our schools. Mr. Casely and his allies are more interested in advancing their own agendas and pushing their political ideologies rather than investing in the education of our children. Their actions are not only short-sighted, but they're damaging to the reputation and the future of Harford County. We are a community that has always prided ourselves on our commitment to education, innovation, and progress, and with these proposed cuts to the school budget, we risk losing all of that. Mr. Casely's political gamesmanship is poorly representing of the best of what Harford County has to offer, and we cannot continue to allow his actions to define us as a community. In conclusion, let us remember that our schools are the foundation of our community. They are not places where our children, they are places where our children learn, grow, and thrive. They are not just an expense. So, I'm encouraging the council to push back on this, and at the same time, I'm asking for a level of leadership, maturity, and an ability for all sides to sit down and knock off the gamesmanship. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Verna White, followed by John Malamo.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
My name is Verna White. I live in Baldwin, Maryland. Harford County resident for 72 years, taxpayer of 50-plus years. I just want to thank you, the Harford County Executive and the council, for treating lifelong taxpayers, 40 years or more, and veterans deserving of honor and appreciation of a slight reduction in our land state taxes. It helps us pay. As this budget does seem to have reduced the deficit, and we're saying that, you know, without raising taxes, I'm hoping every taxpayer in Harford County should take notice, find your 2022 estate tax notice, see how much there is over three years of an increase in buildings, land, et cetera. See what you pay and pay, and what you have to say. Call, email, write what you feel about these, to these seven elected, chosen county council members. They represent all of us, all of us who pay taxes. Harford County has always excelled in quality education, money spent to teach and prepare for success. I don't want groups with special interests should not have the say. Taxpayers should. If you pay, you have a say. I just want to know, where does the money go? And every taxpayer should ask this question. The state mandates for education's blueprint for Maryland. If the money doesn't exist, how can you possibly mandate it? Are you going to pay it? Harford County needs to stay above Baltimore County, Baltimore City, and not go the low way down. We don't want the worst educational system. We had the best, and we still have it. If Harford County Public Schools have that fund balance of 92 million in unspent taxpayer monies, do they need more? If it's true, do they? I and all taxpayers would understand the need if educational salaries were published in public review. The superintendent's salary should be publicized. I don't mind putting mine for retirement. You're welcome to it. If you post your salary, and then the public can see where the money flows. I start saving for my land taxes in July, as soon as I pay that year. Retirees do not usually get raises or salaries like some school employees. Taxpayers start posting your real estate tax bills, show the increase in value of buildings, et cetera. Then, we need to post to top guys in education or elsewhere and see how they compare. Let us all know if you even pay Harford County, if those people even pay Harford County estate taxes. Let's discuss the need for any increase. If there's a need, I'm for it. Maybe we need some money for road repairs. They're getting really bad lately. The traffic's so bad that so many people have come to Harford County, I can't even get out my driveway. Please help the quality of living in Harford County. We don't need bumper-to-bumper traffic. If it's so bad, why is everybody coming here? Schools, I used to be a teacher. I taught for almost 20-some years. I had to retire because of medical, but I have a master's of BS, my son says, and my other family member says I have a doctorate of BS. I think you're wonderful. I'm not criticizing you. I'm just saying that certain people are getting certain advantages that maybe you're not getting. You're the workforce. I just want to know, please show me the money flow. Where does the property tax money go? If it's used for good, good, that's fine with me. I also want to bless the police and sheriff's employees.
Ms. White, please bring your comments to a close.
Thank you for keeping seniors and everyone else safe. And I want to thank you guys. You deserve a raise for listening to us.
Name and address, please.
Sir, good evening to you and your colleagues. John P. Malamo, 2402 Eagleview Drive, Bel Air, Maryland. As I read, the current budget, proposed budget is adopted. Whether you vote yes, no, or withhold a vote, you cannot increase it. Have limited authority to decrease or delete items. If that's the case, this has been great theater. Please stop grandstanding the budget. You still get to march in the Fourth of July parade. Looking at the two most recent administrations, Mr. Craig came into office in the midst of a robust development boom. Money from new development increased revenues. Underutilized facilities held expenditures constant. As facilities hit capacity, new projects and associated personnel compensations increased expenditures. The budget construct Mr. Craig inherited mistakenly projected a steady funding stream of increasing revenues. The bottom fell out. The state passed teacher pensions back to the counties. State highway cut funding from 16 million to virtually nothing. Growth went to nothing. Tax revenue fell. People and programs were cut. Budget guidance was simple. Cut budget, department budgets, no new programs, no pay raises. The school board budgeted a 2% reduction in pay for their employees. Mr. Craig intervened to stop that. Statutory pay raises were eliminated. All county employees were required to take an unpaid leave. Every member but one of the sitting council voluntarily gave up equivalent pay. Remember that, Mr. Guthrie? You were there. In spite of all this, the county secured a AAA bond rating and adopted budgets to fund operations. Mr. Craig passed on a budget construct that reflected economic realities, conservative revenue projections, and expenditures. Recall that in the first few years of his administration, Mr. Glassman produced cautious budgets. Construction on Hevery Grace High School was delayed. He then began accruing budget surpluses, mainly from the tax cuts and job acts, revised property tax revenues, COVID and economic stimulus distributions, and an inability to accurately project revenues. Mr. Glassman passed on budget construct projecting revenues continuing from these factors. That was egotistical, immature, irresponsible, reckless, and ignored economic responsibilities, reality. The economic future is clouded at best. Recession, inflation, reduced defense budget, tax cut and job acts ending, economic stimulus and COVID distributions ending, housing market turmoil, and rising interest rates. I don't know what will happen next, neither does anyone else. Harford County lurches from one extreme to the other, never fully recovering from previous disturbances, and never learning. Mostly budgets fund projects or people, not both. I doubt that Mr. Casely will be able to reduce the cost to government. His challenge is to manage cost growth. Perhaps you could both develop criteria to formulate budget constructs, funding necessary projects, and adequate personnel compensation. Please consider this budget a transition, a glide path to stability, rather than a climb to the next disaster. Good night.
Thank you, sir.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
With no other speakers, this will conclude this public hearing.